A resolution congratulating the Moni Pinto Phillies baseball team. Whereas the residents of Moni are fortunate to have individuals who donate their time, effort, and other resources to guide our local youth. And whereas through the efforts of these volunteers and coaches, one of the best local baseball teams has been formed in respect to their age division. And whereas the Moni Pinto Phillies baseball team is composed of dedicated coaches and parents who have instilled the characteristic of hard work, discipline, and dedication unto the players. And whereas these players have been recognized as a top-flight team with a spirit of determination and pride. And whereas a great team effort secured a championship and now proudly known as the undefeated Will Can Pinto champions. Whereas the coach, the team's, I'm sorry, the team's coaching staff, parents, and players have made the residents of the Village of Moni proud of their success, not only as athletes but as young men. Now therefore be resolved that Mayor Jay Farquhar and Board of Trustees of the Village of Moni hereby recognize the outstanding accomplishments of the 2013 undefeated Moni Pinto Phillies baseball team and wish everyone associated with the team continued success both on and off the field. Be it further resolved that this resolution being effective immediately upon its adoption. This day, July 11, 2013.
Your call number?
Our resolution, resolution number 2015-4. Roll call please. Justine Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gracy?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Second resolution is very similar. A resolution congratulating the Moni Bronco White Sox baseball team. Whereas the residents of Moni are fortunate to have individuals who donate their time and effort and resources to help our local youth. Whereas through the efforts of these volunteers and the coaches, one of the best baseball teams has been formed with respect to this age division. Whereas the Moni Bronco White Sox baseball team is composed of dedicated coaches and parents who have instilled the same characteristic of hard work, discipline, and dedication unto the players. Whereas these players have become a top-flight team with a spirit of determination, pride, and joy. Whereas a great team effort secured a championship and now are proudly known as the Will Can Bronco champions. Whereas the team's coaching staff, players, and parents have made the residents of Moni very proud of their success, again, not only as athletes but as young men. Now therefore be resolved that Mayor Jay Farquhar and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Moni hereby recognize the outstanding accomplishments of the 2013 Moni Bronco White Sox baseball team and wish everyone associated with the team continued success both on and off the field. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be in effect upon its adoption. This 11th day of July, 2013.
Motion.
I have a motion. My apologies, just to clarify. I mean, I have to go back to the previous one too, I guess, because I, let me just say this. I'm sorry, my daughter's been in the hospital all day and I just kind of ran a little bit right now, so just if you don't mind, we just need to go back to the previous one. I need you for violent reasons, I need to add a motion on the second one. Motion.
Second.
Second. Any other roll call again on the first one?
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gracy?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
If we could get the teams to all just come up front here so we can just get a picture.
One of the Phillies come first.
Phillies, White Sox, and the other? Phillies, Sox, or?
My coaches?
Yes, please.
Add a coat, bring that coat. Bring a shirt. Phillies and Sox.
We ain't getting that off of you.
Great. We're gonna have to. Why you not down, dude? All that's wrong with the flag, guys.
White Sox smile.
At school.
At this time, I'd like a motion to remove the executive session of the possibility of motion.
Roll call please.
Justine Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like a motion to remove the executive session of the possibility of motion.
Second.
Okay. Communication clerk's office, can you report this time?
No, report this way.
Mr. Minister?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. You'll find in your bag that item F1 is a contract with the Seco Consultants that they are coordinating operation. And we already have an existing contract for them to do core samples on Ridgeland Avenue south of Brunns. This is a contract seeking in addition to that so that we can have core samples taken on Sunset Drive. The reason for these, this request is core samples will help us to determine what type of road reconstruction would be needed for road improvements. This type of information does not, I won't say that it has an infinite shelf life, however, the information that we receive from that will be good for some time in the future. So we're not wasting our money and it does help us in long-range planning. The total amount of this part of the contract, or this contract would be $6,770. And I'm looking for a motion and approval to enter this contract with Seco. Happy to answer any questions.
I would make that motion to begin discussion.
Second.
Sure, discussion?
Discussion. Couple of questions. Where, why are we looking at Sunset as anything? Because originally, when speaking with Trustee Pop, Sunset was not included in the list of roads that he had originally included. And I know that Core Sample was taken south of Brunns on Ridgeland, but it seemed like we have more industrial traffic on the north end of Ridgeland that probably should be more of a concern in Sunset right now. I don't know many businesses down there besides the one that has a lot of traffic. Why, and where does that fall in relation to the, as to which road project we're looking at? Yes, sir. Trustee Pearson, this does not establish any hierarchy of roads to be completed or in the future, but what it does is it arms us with the information. Sunset is an industrial road. The reason we're taking a look at that is because it appears to have a good base. It is getting more traffic because we have a few more businesses down there. At the end, we have the, I can't remember the exact name, it's a tank business that's in there. It's at the very end in the old Hertz building. They have redeveloped that. And we have had inquiries into the Moni truck facility that has been before this board is developing. And the third and final thing is that that roadway lies within a Tiff district. And if we have put core samples, it may behoove the village through advice of engineering that we may only have to scarf that road and lay a top coat on that for preservation of that for 15 years in the future. We don't know. That's the whole idea of spending this money upfront to determine what kind of base is there. With your, in regards to your comment on Ridgeland, on the north end of Ridgeland, which would be between Lakeway Drive and Moni Manhattan, that road did have core samples. It determined that it needs total reconstruction. Those engineering plans have been completed and are sitting on the shelf waiting for funding. And that is one of the items that Trustee Pop, that we looked at earlier in his earlier comments regarding roadways. And then, of course, Ridgeland Avenue south of Brunns is on there. They're in the process of taking care of that as well. Any, I might add that any determination of roads to be done would be before this village on approved list. We're just now just trying to gather the information that will enable engineering and the village board to make an informed decision. If this $6,000 come out of Tiff or doesn't come out of Tepoe? That part of the, of the fill, it is Tiff, it is a Tiff-eligible expense. And we would be looking to pay for that out of Tiff. Ridgeland Avenue south of Brunns does not lie within the Tiff district and would come out of Road Bridge.
Any other discussion questions? Have we had a motion in a second? Roll call please.
Justine Pearson?
No.
Pop?
Yes.
Gracy?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number two, it doesn't appear on your agenda, it's just a, to bring the board up to date. On Monday, through some arduous tasking of our Public Works and Police Department, working with Will County and the engineers that they've hired, we do have the traffic lights up and operational at Moni Manhattan and Egyptian Trail. Just to refresh everyone's memory, Superintendent Griselda, did I just steal?
You did steal one hundred and one.
Sorry about that. Just to refresh the board's memory, that was a joint operation between Will County, which took 50 percent of the cost, University Park did 25 percent, and the village of Moni did the other 25 percent. We now take over the operation of those lights and are responsible 50-50 with University Park for the maintenance and ongoing operations. Will County Highway Department does retain the rights for timing of those lights and things of that nature, so. And with that, I would like to give a, this is the first board meeting of the month, so I would like to give a short report on behalf of Ruben Batista, who is our emergency management coordinator, as well as community services coordinator. And this past time, Ruben would like me to report that he was successful in obtaining the Illinois Department of Natural Resources grant for parks and recreation. And it allows the village to hire two workers at $9 an hour with the age, between the ages of 14 and 18. And one worker who would act as a supervisor at $12 an hour for a 19-year-old. This would run through approximately through the end of August, if I'm not mistaken. So those salaries would be reimbursed to the village. And the second item was the reminder and the status report on the park programs to include classes such as Zumba, Fit for Seniors Boot Camp, which is similar to a P90X program. The programs are set to start on July 16 and run through August the 22nd. And at that time, I would like to conclude the report. I would like to ask Chief Sitgar, if he has a report.
Three main written items for the board today. Let's hope you know that we took delivery of the two Dodge squad cars that equipment's being ordered. They'll be outfitted and full service very shortly. I'm going to steal a little thunder today. Kids' Day was a resounding success. We had no issues. The police department handed out 200 Eddie Book on Safety cartoon and coloring books, stickers, and probably by equal number of honorary cadet police officers, stickers to go with that. We didn't have any incidences that we had to agree to. And that was, wasn't changed from where things happened. Last thing I'm going to bring up today is that the concealed carry law in Illinois has passed. There's going to be administrative rules that have to be crafted by the Illinois State Police. As soon as I know what they are, if somebody has a question or wants to be a concealed carry permit applicant, you can contact me as soon as I know. I will certainly let you all know. That's it.
Superintendent Griselda?
Yes, sir. Since I don't have a mic in front of me, I'll stand here again. First, I'd like to thank the community for attending the first annual Kids' Day. It was met with great success. The community, along with multiple agencies, came together. And the event was met with an overwhelming turnout of kids. Part of the public works duties were to monitor the touch truck vehicles, work with the fire department in setting the perimeter for the fireworks, and prep our newly opened park building for the masses to enjoy all the concessions that were served out of it. Another one was the construction of the slip and slide. I'd like to thank Mayor, the Trustee, Police Department, Fire Department for their participation along with all the volunteers and the businesses that had showed up to assist throughout the day. I'd like to personally thank my Public Works Department for their hard efforts and volunteering their time during that event. I also understand they made the Facebook news with the after-hours antics at the slip and slide, as I was told it was to test the integrity of the system. So whoever posted that, I would like to thank, I would like to thank them for that. Secondly, the park restoration has completed, all the parks. It took many man-hours and much material to complete the task. I'd like to personally thank Excalibur Enterprises out of New Lenox for the loan of a skid steer that was used to load all the pea ground along the parks. It was loan-free to the municipality. It saved us over $1,000 for the week and a half that we had it. And we were able to use those resources elsewhere. And the final park signs are being painted as we speak. Weather permitting, they should be done and freshly painted and outfitted by the weekend. Some of the thunder was stalled with the intersection at Moni Manhattan. Just wanted to make sure that people paid attention when approaching the intersection. It's a period of adjustment for people. They're used to stopping, and if you come flying up on it and somebody's used to stopping as a habitual thing, you might be night with some red lights real quick. We've seen it while we're out testing lights, so just be careful. Lastly, I am speaking on behalf of a resident, Katie Gomez, at 512-5 West Park Lane. She has a hearing impaired child and has approached Chief Sitgar and myself about possibly getting some signs installed on the parkway to denote the hearing impaired child in the area or at play. And with approval of the board, we would like to get the load installed at 512-5 West Park Lane on the east and west side of the streets to take the traffic both on coming and going. And this concludes my report.
Okay. Mr. Minister, we need a ordinance allowing for the signage to be erected for that, or is there?
If it's just for the child who's hearing impaired, no, I don't think.
It's an advisory, sir, Mr. Mayor, so it's not enforcement that we have to create. Do we need a, any motion by the board?
Two.
Second. Okay, that's Allison Gray. Roll call please.
Justine Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. Pearson, Gonzalez?
Roll call please. Justine Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gracy?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay, Communication Clerk's Office, can you report this time?
No, report this way.
Mr. Minister?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. You'll find in your bag that item F1 is a contract with the Seco Consultants that they are coordinating operation. And we already have an existing contract for them to do core samples on Ridgeland Avenue south of Brunns. This is a contract seeking in addition to that so that we can have core samples taken on Sunset Drive. The reason for these, this request is core samples will help us to determine what type of road reconstruction would be needed for road improvements. This type of information does not, I won't say that it has an infinite shelf life, however, the information that we receive from that will be good for some time in the future. So we're not wasting our money, and it does help us in long-range planning. The total amount of this part of the contract would be $6,770. And I'm looking for a motion and approval to enter this contract with Seco. Happy to answer any questions.
I would make that motion to begin discussion.
Second.
Sure, discussion?
Discussion. Couple of questions. Where, why are we looking at Sunset as anything? Because originally, when speaking with Trustee Pop, Sunset was not included in the list of roads that he had originally included. And I know that Core Sample was taken south of Brunns on Ridgeland, but it seemed like we have more industrial traffic on the north end of Ridgeland that probably should be more of a concern in Sunset right now. I don't know many businesses down there besides the one that has a lot of traffic. Why, and where does that fall in relation to the, as to which road project we're looking at? Yes, sir. Trustee Pearson, this does not establish any hierarchy of roads to be completed or in the future, but what it does is it arms us with the information. Sunset is an industrial road. The reason we're taking a look at that is because it appears to have a good base. It is getting more traffic because we have a few more businesses down there. At the end, we have the, I can't remember the exact name, it's a tank business that's in there. It's at the very end in the old Hertz building. They have redeveloped that. And we have had inquiries into the Moni truck facility that has been before this board is developing. And the third and final thing is that that roadway lies within a Tiff district. And if we have put core samples, it may behoove the village through advice of engineering that we may only have to scarf that road and lay a top coat on that for preservation of that for 15 years in the future. We don't know. That's the whole idea of spending this money upfront to determine what kind of base is there. With your, in regards to your comment on Ridgeland, on the north end of Ridgeland, which would be between Lakeway Drive and Moni Manhattan, that road did have core samples. It determined that it needs total reconstruction. Those engineering plans have been completed and are sitting on the shelf waiting for funding. And that is one of the items that Trustee Pop, that we looked at earlier in his earlier comments regarding roadways. And then, of course, Ridgeland Avenue south of Brunns is on there. They're in the process of taking care of that as well. Any, I might add that any determination of roads to be done would be before this village on approved list. We're just now just trying to gather the information that will enable engineering and the village board to make an informed decision. If, does this $6,000 come out of Tiff or does it come out of Tepoe? That part of the, of the fill, it is Tiff-eligible expense. And we would be looking to pay for that out of Tiff. Ridgeland Avenue south of Brunns does not lie within the Tiff district and would come out of Road Bridge.
Any other discussion questions? Have we had a motion in a second? Roll call please.
Justine Pearson?
No.
Pop?
Yes.
Gracy?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number two, it doesn't appear on your agenda, it's just a, to bring the board up to date. On Monday, through some arduous tasking of our Public Works and Police Department, working with Will County and the engineers that they've hired, we do have the traffic lights up and operational at Moni Manhattan and Egyptian Trail. Just to refresh everyone's memory, Superintendent Griselda, did I just steal?
You did steal one hundred and one.
Sorry about that. Just to refresh the board's memory, that was a joint operation between Will County, which took 50 percent of the cost, University Park did 25 percent, and the village of Moni did the other 25 percent. We now take over the operation of those lights and are responsible 50-50 with University Park for the maintenance and ongoing operations. Will County Highway Department does retain the rights for timing of those lights and things of that nature, so. And with that, I would like to give a, this is the first board meeting of the month, so I would like to give a short report on behalf of Ruben Batista, who is our emergency management coordinator, as well as community services coordinator. And this past time, Ruben would like me to report that he was successful in obtaining the Illinois Department of Natural Resources grant for parks and recreation. And it allows the village to hire two workers at $9 an hour with the age, between the ages of 14 and 18. And one worker who would act as a supervisor at $12 an hour for a 19-year-old. This would run through approximately through the end of August, if I'm not mistaken. So those salaries would be reimbursed to the village. And the second item was the reminder and the status report on the park programs to include classes such as Zumba, Fit for Seniors Boot Camp, which is similar to a P90X program. The programs are set to start on July 16 and run through August the 22nd. And at that time, I would like to conclude the report. I would like to ask Chief Sitgar, if he has a report.
Three main written items for the board today. I want you to know that we took delivery of the two Dodge squad cars that equipment's being ordered. They'll be outfitted and full service very shortly. I'm going to steal a little thunder today. Kids' Day was a resounding success. We had no issues. The police department handed out 200 Eddie Book on Safety cartoon and coloring books, stickers, and probably by equal number of honorary cadet police officers, stickers to go with that. We didn't have any incidences that we had to agree to. And that was, wasn't changed from where things happened. Last thing I'm going to bring up today is that the concealed carry law in Illinois has passed. There's going to be administrative rules that have to be crafted by the Illinois State Police. As soon as I know what they are, if somebody has a question or wants to be a concealed carry permit applicant, you can contact me as soon as I know. I will certainly let you all know. That's it.
Superintendent Griselda?
Yes, sir. Since I don't have a mic in front of me, I'll stand here again. First, I'd like to thank the community for attending the first annual Kids' Day. It was met with great success. The community, along with multiple agencies, came together. And the event was met with an overwhelming turnout of kids. Part of the public works duties were to monitor the touch truck vehicles, work with the fire department in setting the perimeter for the fireworks, and prep our newly opened park building for the masses to enjoy all the concessions that were served out of it. Another one was the construction of the slip and slide. I'd like to thank Mayor, the Trustee, Police Department, Fire Department for their participation along with all the volunteers and the businesses that had showed up to assist throughout the day. I'd like to personally thank my Public Works Department for their hard efforts and volunteering their time during that event. I also understand they made the Facebook news with the after-hours antics at the slip and slide, as I was told it was to test the integrity of the system. So whoever posted that, I would like to thank, I would like to thank them for that. Secondly, the park restoration has completed, all the parks. It took many man-hours and much material to complete the task. I'd like to personally thank Excalibur Enterprises out of New Lenox for the loan of a skid steer that was used to load all the pea ground along the parks. It was loan-free to the municipality. It saved us over $1,000 for the week and a half that we had it. And we were able to use those resources elsewhere. And the final park signs are being painted as we speak. Weather permitting, they should be done and freshly painted and outfitted by the weekend. Some of the thunder was stalled with the intersection at Moni Manhattan. Just wanted to make sure that people paid attention when approaching the intersection. It's a period of adjustment for people. They're used to stopping, and if you come flying up on it and somebody's used to stopping as a habitual thing, you might be night with some red lights real quick. We've seen it while we're out testing lights, so just be careful. Lastly, I am speaking on behalf of a resident, Katie Gomez, at 512-5 West Park Lane. She has a hearing impaired child and has approached Chief Sitgar and myself about possibly getting some signs installed on the parkway to denote the hearing impaired child in the area or at play. And with approval of the board, we would like to get the load installed at 512-5 West Park Lane on the east and west side of the streets to take the traffic both on coming and going. And this concludes my report.
Okay. Mr. Minister, we need a ordinance allowing for the signage to be erected for that, or is there?
If it's just for the child who's hearing impaired, no, I don't think.
It's an advisory, sir, Mr. Mayor, so it's not enforcement that we have to create. Do we need a, any motion by the board?
Two.
Second. Okay, that's Allison Gray. Roll call please.
That's Allison Gray.
Justine Gracy?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like a motion to remove the executive session of the possibility of motion. Do we need a, any motion by the board?
Two.
Second. Okay, that's Allison Gray. Roll call please.
That's Allison Gray.
Justine Gracy?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Okay. Was there any questions regarding the department heads, for any of the trustees? Anything else, Mr. Minister?
No, sir, that concludes my report.
On the mayor's agenda, we have the resolution which we very, we bumped up. Item number two is a mayoral appointments. Currently, we have some vacancies on our committee placements, which include two different parts of the village structure, one of which is the Police Commission. What's the correct actual Police Commission?
It's usually the Fire Police Commission.
Well, we don't have Fire, right. Yeah, so we, I haven't received one resume thus far for that. I believe others have expressed interest in that. We also have a couple vacancies on our planning and zoning committee. I'd like to have all our committees fully operational and functioning effectively. So as I indicated, I did receive one resume. I'm going to ask that we post the openings on the village website for the purpose of letting people know about the possibilities of those openings, and ask anybody who's interested to submit their resumes with a cover letter indicating their area of interest and expertise that would contribute to the success of either of those committees. So that's all I have at this time.
Is that an informal motion?
Not so much, just a status update. I would, of course, like to share the enthusiasm about how successful Kids' Day was.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. But I will say this, it was nice to see such a well-run event on such short notice. And as far as the village's cost goes, oh, let me just say this, as far on the cost issue, it didn't possibly do that. That's the part that I think people need to be well aware of. We had enough enthusiasm from the local business community that we actually had people that expressed their frustration that we didn't have time to reach out to all the businesses to give them an opportunity to participate. We'll work on that. That's a good problem to have. All right. End of report. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have three items for board's consideration. The first item is a resolution relating to participation by elected officials in the Illinois Retirement Fund. It's a resolution basically saying that elected officials, if they put required hours in per year, have the right to participate in the retirement fund. We will send a copy of this to the IMRF for their approval, but that person, which would be, the position itself, would be the village president and the village clerk, would have to perform at least $600 per year for services, and they, what that position has the right to participate in the fund. The fund does have the right, and they do, they do audit records to verify that individual or position has been fulfilled for $600. This is standard operating procedure, but the Illinois Retirement Fund, compared to other pensions, is in very good shape. But they will audit, and we have to make sure that the dollars are put in in case they knock on a door. But the IMRF is in good shape financially.
Counsel? If I might make one direction there, the requiring performance duty for 1,000 hours, not $600, is, Moni is 1,000. And it is so indicated on the resolution.
Any discussion questions?
I do. If we adopt this resolution, does the village need to make a, do we make a financial contribution, or do we have to make a financial contribution, or is that a part of the two elected positions here?
I believe it's the two elected positions, but I'll verify it with IMRF. I have written staff, counsel, Kathleen O'Brien to verify that, but I will confirm that one time.
So these are the only two positions eligible for IMRF?
Elected officials, unless you put $1,000 per year.
And that's hard to prove.
Well, it's hard to prove, and secondarily, I would just caution that given prior experiences in different municipalities, they are very diligent with respect to that. So they ask for time slips or, not time slips, I shouldn't say that, but just verification hours have been put in, we've got to supply that.
If I may, one that was brought to my attention regarding this situation, I had identified the fact that the clerk has been putting a significant amount of time in as well. Mr. Minister, have you observed significant contribution time on the part of the clerk?
Absolutely. And yourself as well.
Yes, but, so that's the reason why the clerk is also listed in there? But any other discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a, I believe I can answer Trustee Horn's question. There is a contribution on behalf of the employee as well as the employer. That's the indication I received from IMRF. Our current rate, employer contribution rate, I believe it's right at 13 percent.
If I may, I don't believe there's any initial contribution from village per se. It would be.
As it goes on.
Exactly.
That is correct.
This is retroactive since May 8.
Right.
So since May 8, 2013, when the office was created, was integrated, but from now on, there'll be a contribution from the elected official that's open to participate along with the village.
Any other discussion?
If we don't know exactly how much the village will have to contribute, can we table this until we know precisely if the work that match is? I mean, because this is a cost structure.
Yes, sir. I mean, I should, I did write to the council, not about the contribution per se, but the format, just to make sure it's from their standpoint okay, because they got to approve it. But I can verify that and promise you would be. But I think Mr. Wallace is correct, it's right around.
If you'd like to defer just momentarily and go on to something else, I can pull our funding sheet, which we currently pay under IMRF rules. If you would like me to do that.
Okay. Mr. [inaudible].
I also understand they made the Facebook news with the after-hours antics at the slip-and-slide, as I was told it was, to test the integrity of the system. So whoever posted that, I would like to thank, I would like to thank them for that. Secondly, the park restoration has completed all the parks. It took many man-hours and much material to complete the task. I'd like to personally thank Excalibur Enterprises out of New Lennox for the loan of a skid steer that was used to load all the pea ground along the parks. It was loan-free to the municipality. It saved us over a thousand dollars for the week and a half that we had it. And we were able to use those resources elsewhere. And the final park signs are being painted as we speak. Weather permitting, they should be done and freshly painted and outfitted by the weekend. Some of the thunder was stalled at the intersection at Moni Manhattan. Just wanted to make sure that people pay attention when approaching the intersection. It's a period of adjustment for people. They're used to stopping, and if you come flying up on it and somebody is used to stopping as a habitual thing, you might be night with some red lights real quick. We've seen it while we're about testing lights, so just be careful. Lastly, I am speaking on behalf of a resident, Katie Gomez, at 512-5 West Park Lane. She has a hearing impaired child in his approach, Chief Sipkar and myself, about possibly getting some signs installed on the parkway to denote the hearing impaired child in the area or at play. And with approval of the board, we would like to get the list all at 512-5 West Park Lane on the east and west side of the streets to take the traffic both on coming and going. And this concludes my report.
Mr. Minister, do we need an ordinance allowing for the signage to be erected for that? Or is there...
If it's just for the child who's hearing impaired, no, I don't think...
It's an advisory, sir, Mr. Mayor, so it's not enforcement that we have to create. Do we need any motion by the board?
No.
Okay, that's Allison Gray. Go ahead, please.
Trustee Racic?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Yes.
Was there any questions regarding the department heads from any trustees? Anything else, Mr. Minister?
No, so that concludes my report.
On the mayor's agenda, we have the resolution which we burnt, we bumped up. Item number two is a mayoral appointments. Currently, we have some vacancies on our committee placements, which include two different parts of the village structure, one of which is the Police Commission. What's the correct actual Police Commission?
It's usually the Fire Police Commission.
Well, we don't have fire, right. Yeah, so we, I haven't received one resume thus far for that. I believe others have expressed interest in that. We also have a couple vacancies on our planning and zoning committee. I'd like to have all our committees fully operational and functioning effectively. So, as I indicated, I did receive one resume. I'm going to ask that we post the openings on the village website for the purpose of letting people know about the possibilities of those openings and ask anybody who is interested to submit their resumes with a cover letter indicating their area of interest and expertise that would contribute to the success of either of those committees. So, that's all I have at this time.
Is that an informal motion?
Not so much, just a status update. I would, of course, like to share the enthusiasm about how successful Kids' Day was.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. But I will say this, it was, it was nice to see such a well-run event on such short notice. And as far as the village's cost goes, oh, let me just say this, as far on the cost issue, it didn't possibly do that. That's the part that I think people need to be well aware of. We had enough enthusiasm from the local business community that we actually had people that expressed their frustration that we didn't have time to reach out to all the businesses to give them an opportunity to participate. We'll work on that. That's a good problem to have. All right. End of report. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, hon. I have three amendments for board's consideration. The first item is a resolution relating to participation by elected officials in Illinois municipal retirement fund. It's a resolution basically saying that elected officials, if they put required hours in per year, have the right to participate in the municipal retirement fund. We will send a copy of this to the IMRF for their approval, but that person, which would be, the position itself would be the village president and the village clerk, would have to perform at least six hundred dollars per year for services, and they, what that position has the right to participate in the fund. The fund does have the right, and they do, they do audit records to verify that individual or position has been fulfilled for six hundred dollars. This is standard operating procedure, but the Illinois municipal retirement fund, compared to other pensions, is in very good shape. But they will audit, and we have to make sure that the hours are put in in case they knock on a draw. But the IMRF is in good shape financially.
Counsel, if I might make one correction there, the requiring performance duty for one thousand hours, not six hundred, is Moni is one thousand. And it is so indicated on the resolution.
Any discussion, questions?
I do. If we, if we adopt this resolution, does the village need to make a, do we make a financial contribu-, or do we have to make a financial contribution, or is that a part of the two elected positions here?
I believe the two elected positions, but I'll verify it with IMRF. I have written staff, counsel, Kathleen O'Brien to verify that, but I will confirm that.
So these are the only two positions eligible for IMRF?
Elected officials, unless you put a thousand dollars per year.
And that's hard to prove.
Well, it's hard to prove, and secondarily, I would just caution that given prior experiences in different municipalities, they are very diligent with respect to that. So they ask for time slips or, not time slips, I shouldn't say that, but just verification hours have been put in, we've got to supply that.
If I may, what was brought to my attention regarding this situation, I had identified the fact that the clerk has been putting a significant amount of time in as well. Mr. Minister, you've observed significant contribution time on the part of the clerk?
Absolutely. And yourself as well.
Yes, but, so that's the reason why the clerk is also listed in there? But any other discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a, I believe I can answer Trustee Horn's question. There is a contribution on behalf of the employee as well as the employer.
Okay.
That's the indication I received from IMRF. Our current rate, employer contribution rate, I believe it's right at thirteen percent.
If I may, I don't believe there's any initial contribution from village per se. There would be...
As it goes on.
Exactly.
That is correct.
This is retroactive since May eighth. So since May eighth, in 2013, when the office was created, was integrated, but from now on, there'll be a contribution from the elected official that's open to participate along with the village.
Any other discussion?
If we don't know exactly how much the village will have to contribute, can we table this until we know precisely if the work that match is? Because this is a cost structure.
Yes, sir. I mean, I should, I did write to the council, not about the contribution per se, but the format, just to make sure it's from their standpoint okay, because they got to approve it. But I can verify that and promise you would be. But I think Mr. Wallace is correct, it's right around...
If you'd like to defer just momentarily and go on to something else, I can pull our funding sheet, which we currently pay under IMRF rules. If you would like me to do that.
Okay. Question, do you want to just have that people pull it?
She doesn't have it.
Oh, sorry. No shame.
Thank you, hon. Well, the next item...
So there's no motion on that, so you just go on.
The next motion would be develop a park user fee ordinance for the board's consideration. Basically, this would be, would be costs for a company or an individual using our facility. The site would be the parks, the civilians, the park buildings. The hourly rate would be thirty dollars per hour. Secure deposit would be two hundred dollars. What this help is to defray our labor costs. We'll have to have someone there monitoring the situation and making sure it's cleaned up. So all we're trying to do is recoup the cost. And there is an organization chart as to who would be given first opportunity. In sequence would be village-sponsored functions. The next would be organizations contracted with the village, example, baseball softball teams. Third, organizations not contracted with the village. And fourth would be residents. So in case there's a conflict, that's the sequence.
When the administrator returns, I believe he wanted to adjust title?
Yes, sir. Correct. But the essence, that's what the ordinance was calling for. He wants to amend the name of the ordinance or the title, but the terms would be the same, the route, the fees would be the same, the organizations would be the same, security deposit would be the same. But again, it's the intent to try to defray some of our costs. It seems like we do have quite a few companies and/or individuals who would like to use our facilities. We talked about this, I believe, a year ago. Yeah, but we never took action on it. There was some mention about resident versus non-resident. It was table for further consideration. We never took any action, so this is up for the board to deal with consideration. But like the mayor indicated, he did comment about what he wanted to change.
Yeah, and the other thing too is, is, you know, some of you are aware, you know, we've got a branded park building. We'd like to keep it in as good a shape as possible for as long as possible by having somebody available, not necessarily supervising every little aspect of what's going on, but being on property anytime the facility is in use. That helps ensure that if there's anything that goes awry or whatever else, it can be dealt with speedily. And the best customer service is also provided to those people that are using our facilities. So that's probably the other issue there. And I believe it's written, the other thing was, trust me, I think you may have brought it up for the discussion regarding this, a threshold, like a two-hour minimum or something of that sort, which may need to be amended to indicate something like that.
That's not in here, I don't think.
Minimum is something hours.
How many, I mean, just for discussion, two-hour minimum, three-hour minimum, or you guys think it's relevant for that?
The one thing with that is, is whomever brings it out.
Yes, sir.
We're going to give them two hours. We're not going to allow them to come in per se, say twelve to two, if they want to set up. We want to give them a buffer zone or say, not a buffer zone, but say, okay, you need to rent it for three hours.
Sure.
Half hour cleanup, half hour setup.
Whatever the time would be, it would be based on the concept that they're paying for the person to open the door until the time the person locks the doors. And that is key to key. Now, it's going to be rather than quarter hours or whatever kind of scenario like that, obviously. But that's just to, to make sure, because, you know, if you're paying somebody by the hour to be there, which is what we'd be doing, you know, you're dealing with it on the premise, that they've got to be there when they get there early, you know, to set up or to tear it out. And so whatever's reserved for, they could, theoretically, they could go over that if they take longer to clean up. But it's still a pain based on until the time they get, until, until the time which the employee gets the shut door.
Which whomever would sign off saying, okay, you like that?
There'd be a checklist, there'd be policies in place where DJ, I think, has talked about creating a, an inspection checklist, kind of like a roll-em card type thing, you know, where you check it off before and after, maybe a little more thorough than that.
If, if I may though, too, and this is, was actually part of my job as community liaison for the school district, and the school district prices are actually higher than this to rent their buildings, and the fourth page of that rental agreement is an exact, which you just described, and we could probably use it nearly almost verbatim, because it is an inspection sheet that the maintenance person does, you know, that the kitchen looks exactly the same, you know, all the inventory is exactly as it was, outlets are clear, et cetera, et cetera, dumping in front of doors and things. And on this Crete Moni 201 website, on that, on the first page, it has rental, building rental, and it's probably a good show to use for us. So exactly how Mr. Gray described and you described, it's key to key. You know, if your, if your event starts at one and you want to get there at twelve to set up, you're looking from twelve until three.
Okay. Any other discussion or concern on that? So it would be key to key, basically, thirty dollars an hour is, and that was based on the fact if we end up having to have a full-timer there and it ends up being overtime or something like that, there's, it's not charging a lot, we're not making money off of it, we're just covering our bases.
But then too, if something goes wrong with electrical or it still doesn't work, or there's like, or what have you.
Right.
The person has somebody at their disposal to make sure the problem is solved.
That brings me to my question, the use of the kitchen, is that also included in this fee? And what is actually use of the kitchen? The refrigerator units?
Well, currently, the refrigerator units and cabinets, as they are, are used by, well, they're currently starting village supplies, if you will. So that would be, at this point, unless we were to secure an additional refrigeration unit, then I would probably be inclined to say at this point, not. But it doesn't mean that if we had an extra refrigeration unit that was available, that they could use it. But we just don't have that, we don't have a stove, we don't have a lot of things in there, and that creates a whole nother, Mr. Crizell, if you could elaborate on some of the issues, that if you were going to add a stove, then you also have to add additional ventilation, fire safety.
If you add a stove in there, it's a whole different ballgame.
Right.
I understand how it's perfected.
Yeah, there were filtration that's in there. We have to review our fire protection, fire safety, chief cable has to get involved with an inspection. There's different levels that that building is designed for. We're currently at a prep kitchen area, and that's all that's designed for, warming centers and so forth. We don't even have a microwave in the building. It's just a kitchen prep area, and that's how it's listed as.
Sure.
As we utilize it with crop pots and warmers. That's what it's designed for.
So I, I hear what sounds to be an amendment to that, two, three-hour, how you, what minimum threshold do you want to have so that we don't have somebody showing up just to open the door for half hour?
Two hours.
Two hours?
Yeah, I think that covers the inconvenience of both either...
Sure, sure.
I think you have to hold it or something.
Fine, so two-hour minimum amendment for that. Mr. Minister?
Yeah.
If you don't mind, the correct title for this ordinance would be?
The ordinance establishing a partner facility staffing fee within the village of Moni and Homero Unit of Service. Staffing fee, sir.
Thank you. So we're not technically renting our facilities as much as we're renting the access to the personnel, service, or that. Okay, so based on that, I'd entertain a motion to accept the, the ordinance as amended? Or in summary?
Sixteen forty-seven.
Uh, we have it. Entertained motion?
Make that motion.
Trustee, please. Trustee Gray?
Trustee Gonzalez?
Can I make one more amendment before we pass it?
Perhaps. You might have to, you might have to request the motion to amend the, the current, what's your...
The only amendment that I looked at last night was a cancellation thirty days prior to a reservation date through the protocol. Just knowing and doing events, that thirty days is probably an absolute impossibility to, to reuse the amount of time for ten days, because that would give public works, example, time to reschedule somebody or unschedule somebody, but it would give the renter or user a little more of a way.
I guess here's the thing, and I understand what you're saying, this is, this is a secondary discussion that could have an amendment to that motion, but taking into account that if somebody's scheduling something, they want to know well in advance, and if you cancel two days before the thing, and somebody else couldn't do it when they really wanted to because it had been pre-booked, and then you canceled two days, ten days, whatever else, I don't know, I don't, I don't know what other facility agreements are.
If we were like in Timmy Park in New Lennox where, you know, events would be scheduled for six months...
You'd be surprised how many commands we've had thus far that have been turned away or put on the shelf because we don't have a, an official policy for this yet. Mr. Minister, I mean, there's been a number of people that have asked about using facilities that we just say have been able to address.
Yes, there has, and, and my suggestion to the board is that whatever the decision is made here this evening, there's nothing that would prohibit this board from amending that should we find it necessary to do so based on some complaints or some conflicts with the use of any facility.
So, Trustee Gonzalez, would you like to make a motion to amend that motion?
I will make a motion to amend that motion to a ten-day cancellation notice prior to an event.
Right here, second.
I'll second it.
A vote to change it from thirty days to ten days. Roque, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
No.
Pop?
Yes.
Racic?
No.
Gray?
No.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
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 I'm going to see if right now, let's let it stand at thirty. Sorry. So I'm going to say no. I feel like I'm one of those, one of those pee show right now. All right. Well, let's proceed with the motion that's on the table. The first one was motion by Pop and the second by Gray, was for the amended ordinance as stated previously, for thirty days. Two-hour minimum was the title for facility staff. So can you go ahead and put it's Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Trustee Racic?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. Move forward.
Thank you, Mayor. My last item I have before we go back to the first issue is we have an ordinance for sale of surplus municipal property. If the board because we passed one of these ordinances in the last four meetings for certain vehicles, we have another deal that is being sold, which is in 2007, a Ford from Detroit. This is surplus property, and by state law, you have to have the ordinance approving the sale of surplus property.
Ordinance number?
Sixteen forty-eight.
Under standing motion for that?
Yeah, I'll move it.
Trustee Horn? Trustee Racic? Yes, please.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Racic?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Then I believe Mr. Wallace has a minute to make.
I do. Our, our rate for this year's total employer rate is thirteen point nine six percent.
Your annual, basically?
No, that's per pay. That's per pay. And, and it would be thirteen point nine six percent of the individual, individual's gross So it varies with employee.
So I believe we need a motion and a second for that?
Second.
Any motion first?
Little bit.
Sorry. Trustee Gray, Trustee Pearson?
Second.
I don't know.
This is the resolution twenty fifteen to six.
Okay. Roque, please.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Racic?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
I don't know, there's a little consumption of alcohol. I know that there's going to be a direction to, to, to review that or to amend that. So, Mr. Minister?
Yes.
I know it's an existing ordinance that was passed, I believe, a year or two ago pertaining to alcohol on public property. And I know there's been some concern or interest in amending that. I just need some direction from the board as to direct the attorney to draft changes to that for actual approval.
Yes, sir. Ordinance number sixteen ten was passed the thirteenth day of June, twenty twelve, and it provided for basically the no consumption of alcohol on municipal property. It says under section three, no person shall bring within half position or control, sell a giveaway, or consume any alcohol beverages at any time on municipal property, except as permitted by the mayor and board of trustees. And I believe the...
The amendment would strike the reference to any person, organization seeking permission, et cetera, to the alcoholic beverages would only be allowed on public property if it's a village-sponsored event or function, whereas the village would have the responsibility because of legal liability reasons and having adequate police and emergency personnel available to deal with any issues. So that's what has been presented based on legal liability issues. So I just need some direction from the board if you'd like to proceed with having the attorney draft those changes for approval in the next meeting.
Yes, we should have paid that in the beginning. We paid the beer garden, you know, at default, trusty, and then at home time.
So I guess this would be just a consensus at this point, not so much of, or would it be a motion?
And you could certainly authorize a motion to direct the attorney to...
And then reaffirm by the actual ordinance.
And then it'll appear on the next agenda, sir.
Okay. Hey, do you like a motion on that, please?
Something.
Okay, Trustee Gonzalez?
Second.
Trustee Pearson? Okay. Roque, please.
Trustee Racic?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Okay.
Good luck, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Under the official's report, we have, Trustee Pop? Any steps at this time on that?
In regards to the water rate, hospital water rate increase and deposit reduction?
Sure.
We're still doing some research on it and not ready to propose anything.
I've seen the steam coming up there, so I know you're the one.
I'm surprised I got there all burned or...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
We should also connect and check into the meter, the pricing and that, see if that needs to be changed as well, and that as well.
Cost of meters themselves? Because I believe you're correct, there, our costs may have gone up on our meters, so that is a point of relevance, that probably does need to be amended.
Yes, yes, right.
Okay. That could be multiple steps, it doesn't have to all be done at one time. So if we need to increase it or change the rates on that specifically, that's fine. Trustee Gray?
I have a couple things on my agenda tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank the public works department prior and past. This has been worked on for about a year and a half as far as the park restoration. We've had malts, we've had mud, we've had puddles. We finally got around to testing the fireworks park on repeat gravel. It's worked out wonderfully. We now have three, four parks that are people... We now have three, four parks at our repeat gravel plus, if I'm not mistaken, KDA client to get into the parks. And they actually, in Waters Road, have shortened up the ground. That actually, as Superintendent Gonzalez said, saved us money, uh, as far as how much space was being given. So publicly, I'd like to thank him. I found that personally, but I would like that to get on record that it was a lot of work, a lot of time. And I'd like to thank them for doing that.
And you're, you're very welcome by the, by the residents, for sure.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Secondly, this is something I brought up in the past and it's been want to say denied, denied, shut down. I hear a lot of talk of there's nothing for our kids to do in our towns besides sporting events. You know, the trustees have talked about the skate park, basketball court. There was a basketball court at one time right here in the creamery in front of the creamery on the parking lot. It was taken down. I would look for present boards to consider possibly looking into a consensus of moving forward to resavaging that basketball court right here on Court, around Court Street right here. So that kids have something else to do right here in the parking lot in front of the creamery building. They had portable ones at the church. There have never been issues down there as far as that alone. And that was one of the issues that's always been brought up. Again, people come to me and say there's nothing for our kids to do in this town. We seen last Saturday. If we bring it, they'll show up.
Trustee Gray? If, if I may, I had a conversation with Pastor Hunt at the church down the street there. And, um, he is thrilled about the kids being there as an alternative to walking streets and getting into trouble and everything else. He's got no problem with the kids continuing to play ball there, even establishing as a partnership, as a community partner, having some three-on-three tournaments, things of that sort, having some workshops of that sort. We could do that rather easily and kind of expand our capabilities without necessarily having to do it on a very limited space, which is really too close to a busy road. It, it potential risk here. How does the board feel about purchasing, because I think their funds are tight as well? How does the board feel about purchasing some portable basketball hoops? They could be loaned to them so they could use there with more space available off the street. I'm just saying for safety's sake. I don't want kids bouncing a ball and, you know, getting thrown on Court Street and next thing you know, we're gonna have some regrets. How does the board feel, if we're gonna acquire some equipment anyhow, about purchasing it and just making it available to be supervised or administered, at least temporarily, on their property? I mean, it's an off-village property issue, but I'm not sure how we, you know, that's a little bit of a...
Lot of village issues.
Well, there again, I'm not sure how much liability it would be if, if we're loaning the equipment to them and, and they're facilitating the...
Places at once and constant, people constantly asking him to do things. It was actually sounding for chief and the fire department for being there all day long and helping find lost kids and bandaging up toes and things and cleaning up.
I'm a lost parent.
I'm a lost parent. And the volunteers, you know, we, we only ordered 50 t-shirts and ran out of them. So we had in excess of 50 volunteers that day, including nearly 20 from Gulf Vista. And I just want to go on record as saying, I'm not, I'm not. Even our seniors came out in full force and spending time with us and our kids and our families that day. So thank you for everything you did, Jackie. Thank you.
You're very welcome. It was a wonderful, wonderful day.
Guitar.
No, I'm not done yet. Wait, wait, wait. I'm not done. Wait, wait. And then, and especially too for the businesses and the sponsors for the event too. And I think Omer Parkour said something earlier, just to let everybody know that we had so many donations and so many offers of help, nothing, you know, and think about the games that we had. That it was like old fashioned kind of fun. All this stuff was, we had or was able to get and in supplies and things, it did not cost the village one little penny and the sponsorships that would allowed us to get those supplies. So thanks to the businesses and for the freebies all day long, you know, the kids, you know, I took my own kids for the last munchkins that Dunkin' Donuts gave out. They gave out 500 munchkins. Shups gave out well over, or sold well over a hundred kids' meals. And the bank, as I understand it too, had over 70 kids come and pick up their goodie bags. So everybody was involved and I know that we, we will do this again. And we did it in four weeks. So I know having more time to plan next year, we can, and that is the one thing I learned. Everybody asked, you know, how many people do you expect? How many kids do you expect? First time trying this holiday weekend, at the most, I hope for 250. I think there was two separate people came up and counted over 500 kids. So double the amount of kids that we had expected. So, and thank the kids, please, thank your kids for wanting to come and come and play with us. So thank you for everybody, everybody in this room, I think, contributed in some way. So thank you for that.
I think we might make the kids parade, the kids race instead. Because it was like their.
So a kids 5K next year, because they were about to turn to get there.
Well, I know, I know Heidi, I mean, a lot of people helped, but I mean, you, you really were the spearhead of this. So can we give her a round of applause?
I thought one of the things, because Heidi and I were talking about this some time back, and it was interesting because one of the things that I thought was really interesting was Heidi threw this extra piece into the mix. I hadn't found them, which I had a lot of ideas, but Heidi threw something in there I didn't expect. And I was very impressed because of the response. And that was not just doing the event at the park, but promoting the area of businesses throughout the day. So you had something to do. And I really was impressed talking to Michelle at the bank. She told me it ended up being over 100. I was in there at 11 o'clock on Saturday morning, and it was so fun to watch the kids walking in with their free smartbies or their free munchkins. And one kid, it was funny, one kid actually says, can I have a taco? You know, I mean, the, the, the parents are sending the kids in for all their freebies and they don't even know where they're at. They're just like, can I have, you know, but it was, it was just delightful to see them on their little scavenger hunt and getting to know our local businesses where they do business. So that was phenomenal. That's helping our businesses. I think Mitsubishi indicated that they might have gotten 30 leads for sales as a result of their sponsorship. Comcast, in case you guys aren't aware of it, they have a promotional deal for any kids that are, I believe this is correct, for any of the kids that are part of the free lunch program through the schools, you guys can get internet for like 10 bucks a month. So that's, you know, that's just one of the programs that they were trying to highlight that day as well. So anyhow, any other officials reports? Trustee Mark, yes, sir?
I just do have an announcement. The next classic movies in the park will be Saturday, July 27th at dusk, and that will be The Adventures of Robin Hood. And we'll see signs around town announcing that.
July 27th?
July 27th.
Which, which, which version of Robin Hood was that?
The Earl Flynn version.
I keep doing that.
But it's in color. It is in color. Even though it's old, it's in.
Is that what it is?
Is it?
And the controller?
No, 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 no.
Take the pause.
And, and it is talky too.
All right. And by the way, it was a nice layout with the, with the screen underneath the pavilion there and even wash it for rain. Okay. Anything else for the elected officials? Okay. Next item, unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to clarify a little bit relating to the trash contract and the transition. With approximately a little over 1,900 accounts, things did go fairly smooth. We certainly had some hiccups and had fielded some residential calls and were able to take care of the majority of those. If you will note, in our hallway here, we have the three sizes of containers which are available to our residents. And also residents are able to request additional trash totes or, and/or additional recycle totes. And if you call the company direct, option three, the number's on the can out there, you can do one of several things. You can request a change in size of your container, or you can request additional containers, all of which will be done at no additional charge if you wait until the August 9th delivery date.
What did they give you that was the one?
You would call in as soon as possible. They'll put you on a list. The delivery and exchange date is set for August 9th. So please pass that out to your neighbors, pass it along. And as always, if there are any questions, please contact the village hall. I'm happy to answer those questions. And we have them on site, so if they want to come in, we have a lot of people that are coming in now with the water billing, getting their water bills, or taking a look at the size of those. And we're trying to explain as often as we can how to go about making it a little bit more pleasant for them.
And the trash totes are what size? I'm sorry, the yard waste totes. If somebody wanted to rent the yard waste tote, what size would that be?
If someone wanted to rent from the company, that would be a 96 gallon tote. That's a large tote.
Okay.
But the other, the other two for trash and recycle, you can either have the 96 gallon, the 65 gallon. There is a 35 gallon that's out there, but that, there's, number one, there's limited supply in the 35 gallons. And number two is it's higher, the company doesn't recommend it because it has a small base and a heavy top. Many times when it's especially empty, it will tip over. It's not near stable as the other ones. So they would like to limit that to for special uses. That's all I have, sir.
I have a question for you, Mr. Wallace. The yard waste, how often do they pick that up?
Every week with your trash. The only alternating pickup is recycle. We do have calendars that depict that in the office up here for public to pick up. And we have some additional information.
So we can use our own tote for yard waste so long as we get a sticker?
That is correct. And the size needs to be limited to no more than 35 gallons.
Okay. And how much are the stickers?
Stickers are free. They're permanent stickers.
Or you're interested in brown bags. You cannot use a plastic bag for your yard waste totes.
That is correct.
They will not take that. And just as a reminder, they will not take electronics. There's an e-waste ban in place. It's been passed by the legislature about two years ago.
That is correct.
So any electronic that you need to get rid of, is there other evidence?
Okay. And continue to the rest of board.
There is, there is. Okay. Any other unfinished business? Next, new business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have submitted, have had submitted to us from Moni Youth Sports, a letter that says, dear board of trustees, we at Moni Youth Sports are seeking your permission to be able to consume alcohol or beverages at our end of season banquet slash family picnic this Saturday, July 13th. The picnic will run from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Fireman's Park. And it's signed sincerely, Greg Weber, President, Moni Youth Sports. I don't know for representatives.
Your board?
Ray Willbe, 5746 Roosevelt, Vice President of Moni Youth Sports.
Craig Ray, 5401, Pettle Brook Trail, Moni, Illinois.
Okay.
On the board also on the slide.
So trustees, do you have any questions?
Basically, what we've done is for the ordinance that was passed last year, we're just following it and we're just letting you guys know that we're having a picnic style and some parents may or may not partake in consumption of alcoholic beverages. So as far as we know, then we just want to pass that along to you. And as far as I know, that that's how the ordinance has been. So we have to notify the board.
It's not a matter of application, it was a matter of request, but for clarification.
Okay.
But based on the passage of the amendment we just put forth, do I here have any trustees who would like to make a motion to approve a variation in that?
Well, before we make a motion, we'll discuss it. I can't see why we need to have help with that. At a youth baseball thing, I realize it's a toast. I think they could refrain from that for those few hours. In respect to the kids, there are people that do not control themselves. I'm not saying that that happened. That's your event. But the possibility is there, and I just don't think it's a good idea for children to be exposed to that.
Well, unless I have a motion, I'd say this will fail for actual motion. Would that be correct, Mr. Trump? Thank you, guys. I'm sorry, this time won't be able to.
No, that's fine. But this was discussed, Mr. Mayor, with yourself and Mr. Wallace, and I cannot believe we wasted our time. I mean, we just could have avoided this whole thing.
I have something.
Oh, go ahead, George. Go ahead, first.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Administrator, I've, you know, been a little persistent on this. And now we'd like to ask, if in a form of a motion, is that what we need to do as far as getting a market study done for this region, where a lot of the changes and proceedings that are going on in the area, I think it's high time that we stepped up, you know, and take care of this. Otherwise, we're going to find ourselves in.
I agree. Mr. Administrator, I think you and I've had these conversations, and that was something that you were endeavoring to do. I know you've already been in process of looking into it. Do we have a present timeline for hiring, hiring firm for that?
Yeah, I do have a timeline, but my intent is to have a presentation made to this board by a consultant that would perform that market study. I'll, I will do my best to have it available for the July 24th or maybe next week.
Thank you.
Is that a process that needs to go out for bid then?
Professional services, it could. We could contact multiple vendors for that, just like engineering. It's a good idea to get multiple options. Depends on what dollar amount is, as well as to whether or not that would qualify for that concern. But it's something we desperately need to do. I know there's multiple firms that can do that, but it's something that we're very keenly aware of. So before we would do that, do you want it to come before the board for an approval of the special, specifically for that?
And then too, I think, maybe perhaps us kind of being pulled on what we would hold that the market study wouldn't include.
Okay. That'll be fine. So before we actually proceed with recruit, actual hiring of a market study firm.
There might be a lot of different opinions.
On what that defines.
Yeah.
I understand. Some people look at it as a job, you know, like, you know, a, not just the, what is the density of our population when it comes to expanding habits and things like that, but the retail market reach, it might be job readiness, things of that.
Go ahead.
Okay, but ba- based on the, the cost of this, wouldn't it come up to the board anyways?
That's kind of where my question was. Eventually we want to set.
My intent was, is to bring a presentation before the board. I, for one, don't know all of the areas that could be included in a market study. And without knowing that, I don't see how we could make an informed decision. So my intent was to bring someone here to lay out the groundwork and say, this is what can be accomplished. And it would be up to the board to then give direction. And then we could, we could seek proposals at that point. And absolutely would come back before this board to enter into a contract.
Okay. Well, I give it a second.
I don't, I don't, I'm not part of it as far as the chambers of Congress go, but obviously I don't know, I don't know Michelle Paulus, obviously she's here tonight. I do know Lee Boswell. They're doing the night at the races at the Bell Mall Park next Wednesday night, which is July 17th. Ticket price is $30. It's complimentary admission, complimentary program, barbecue, pork, parmesan, soft drinks, and I don't know, group photo in the winner's circle. Again, I'm not big in chambers of Congress. I know everything. I contact Lee Boswell. Phone number's 421-1786. Or Michelle Paulus, and she's with First Bank of U.S. Bank, 534-6924. And again, that is the, opens up at 6:00. Service is at 7:00. Food service and first race starts at 7:10. And again, I'm just relaying this for the representatives of the chambers of Congress. And again, that's next Wednesday night at Bell Mall Racetrack. I first have been to it two years ago. It's nice time just to get out and relax and have some laughs with people out here in town. It was sometimes a lot.
Hey, I think there's some new business. That's also, by the way, that's also the same that's planned in the zoning. This is one of our.
So you can't go.
So are you going to go there? Are you going to have your meeting?
No, you quit.
Any other new business? Okay, nothing further. We're going to open to the public. Non-agent items, please limit your counts to three minutes. Come to the podium, get your name, address, and any other interesting information you don't know about you.
I'm like, you don't know about me. David Holston, 5326, was mainstream. For the record, I stayed until late 45 so I could make the announcement about Melmore Park at Moni Chamber of Commerce. Lee Boswell called me and asked me to make sure I came and made the announcement for him tonight. So thank you, Mr. Gray. Tonight I'm going to have dinner.
Okay, I'll come for you. Let me know.
I'm not going to duplicate that. Anthony Scott, 26423, South Winfield Road. It was exciting to watch the, I'm going to call it, all of you talking about how well the children's program went. When, and what I was surprised is that nobody came up with the idea, said you've got so much enthusiasm around supporting the children. The kind of do is just ask the businesses, ask the people of township to pay for the basketball hoops. I remember when we were at another city, we were just there at a church, pastor said, we need somebody to step forward and help us. We just wrote a check out right there. They bought a basketball hoop and that was it. I think if you ask, you'll get. If you don't ask, you don't get. So we don't have to go to anybody to add, I mean, we don't have to spend money out of the, I'm going to call it the village.
Sure.
It's just a matter of asking. And you'd be surprised. You might come away with the study. They might say, we need the following. And businesses might step forward and fund the cost of it just to get their name on it or whatever.
Mr. Scott, I'm sorry, just reminding, what kind of business are you in?
I'm not doing.
Oh, I just, I saw you were extending an offer.
I wasn't doing that at all.
I believe that lives I heard of is going to cost us about a thousand dollars for the hoops.
I don't think so. But whatever the cost is, I am sure that there are businesses here.
Oh, no, I'm sure.
Who would be more than happy or individuals.
I thought you were extending an offer.
Not at all.
Okay.
Nice try.
We always like to give solutions, not just.
I, I understand. That was the solution. You just got to ask though. So then here's the, here's a question I've got, because I don't really understand. With the IMF, IMRF program, is that a legal requirement that if a person is in a position, whether they're mayor or clerk or something else, will be legally obligated to make a contribution to that program? And does that obligate the village to create a pension that's like an annuity for the rest of that person's life?
You're asking about legal things a little bit further, Johnny.
Sir, I don't believe for the rest of his life. It's, is the position. As long as they're in that position, they're contributing. Yeah, we have an obligation for that individual. But it's not a lifetime obligation.
Unless they're in for a lifetime.
Well, no, what I'm thinking of is you can contribute to a plan, like an employee. And then after you contribute to the plan, the, I'm going to call it, the institution is then obligated to create a lifetime pension, kind of like what we have here in Illinois when we're bankrupt, here in bankruptcy. So I'm thinking about that futuristically. Is that creating a future obligation that we may not be able to meet at some time in the future, even though today it looks good?
Well, once the resolution's passed, there is an obligation from the village standpoint to fund it. Correct. But that's like for any other employee. If the employee's qualified under IMRF now, since we're over 5,000 people, we have an obligation to fund it. Correct. So there, you are right in the sense that there's.
I said like the state should be.
Well, like Governor Clinton did today, stopping the payments. Exactly. Right. But you're right, there's, there will be an obligation from the village. But that's for any home role, sorry, any participant under IMRF. So there is an obligation. Correct. But the employee also has obligation to kick in.
But if I understand correctly, it's also a program that is, is not, Mr. Administrator, is not underfunded in the sense that everything that is put in is balanced out with any, it's, it's not like those have been robbed from in order to spend on other projects.
Mr. Scott, it is, the village, if, because the resolution was passed, the village has an obligation to put in their share of IMRF contribution, the employer's share, as long as the employee is employed here. At the time, the employee is no longer receiving a paycheck from here, then the village makes no further contribution. Any pension, if any, is all handled by IMRF. IMRF is the, is the highest level funded retirement pension in the state of Illinois. And they manage everything. The employees that, that were adopted here by the two elected officials under this will, will fall under a tier two program, will, under IMRF, but that is all handled outside. So our only, our obligation only goes as long as the employee receives a paycheck from us. Any handling of pension is outside of village control. And there are no further obligations to that.
So any contribution that's made by the employee, whoever the employee is within the village, those monies are returned to them first at the time of distribution. And at the time of death, all obligation, I'm going to call it a minor, or the village ceases. So it's any other pension.
It's tied to the position. It's not tied to the person.
Correct. And that's what I, that's what I think the difference is. So the longer, if Mr. Parkour is not mayor in 12 years, we're not paying him for the rest of his life that IMRF distribution.
If whoever's holding that position, as a contribution is put in on their behalf and that's it.
Sir, are you asking for survivor's loss benefits?
Things of that nature.
I don't believe that's the case. I can check on it.
It's similar to almost like a 403B?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't think there's survivor's loss benefits. It's not like the county or the state. I don't believe that that's the case. But like Mr. Wallace indicated, IMRF compared to the downstate pension, is very, very well funded. Their rate on return, I wish I could get it, it's very good. But they're very well funded, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And if you would like, we have an IMRF book pamphlet that we'd be happy to give you before you leave this evening.
We pray not like it.
Give that.
Right.
Do you want to turn around and look at the camera?
No, I want to be sure. Jackie, Jackie Erland, 25620, Shoal Creek. Well, first of all, I wanted to compliment the village on the new trash pickup. It went very well for us and they were earlier than all of the others were. And the gentleman that picked up the yard refuge was more than accommodating, get, brought us a label to put on our can because I made mine at home and stuck it on there. But they were, they were, they were excellent. They were very good. The second thing I want to do, and it's hard to get old people excited about, it really is. But I can't tell you how exciting it was to participate in Kids Day on Saturday. That, it was a, it was just a fantastic day to see all those families enjoying themselves and really costing them little or nothing in order to do it. And they go back over and see the fireworks at night with all the families spread out on the grass and having such good time together. It was wonderful. And you should all be very, very proud. And Heidi, you did a great job.
Jackie, Jackie, I just, you know, one more thing I just want to throw in there. Some of you realize that I've got a 15-year-old daughter who's got cerebral palsy. She enjoys things like this, but doesn't routinely get to participate. Because of the support of Gulf Vista specifically, she was able to ride in a golf cart in the parade, which just made her day.
Absolutely. Great.
So I just, you know, special thank you to Gulf Vista, the ELS, as well as the association itself. So.
Thank you. Thank you. We were glad to be able to participate.
Yes, my name is Reverend Calvin, Saint Ignatius Senior, desire at 265006, South Regis. Now, my question is about this four hour, or two hour rental. That's not enough time. You should have at least four hours. You know, Homewood, I rented from Homewood, I rented from East Hayes Press. Oh, no, four hour limit of time. I'm just saying that. Taking into consideration two hours. And if a person turns around and put down their money, they, they should be able to schedule themselves to know if they're going to have the event for 30 days or whatever they're going to have it for. So don't feel bad about they put their deposit down. They should know what they're doing, you know.
Mr. Rich, when you rented from the other municipality, what rates do you recall with? Was it hourly rate you paid there?
No, no. I, if you were resident, I think it was something just like maybe a hundred dollars, you know. And actually, we had it the whole day. And we didn't have anybody coming in and saying, well, like this, like that, you took the key, you were responsible. And you had to make sure that place was cleaned up. Don't your security deposit, you lost.
Sure.
So that's all I'm saying. When somebody comes in there, they're not going to rent it for two hours.
Well, we're just, we're just on two hour minimum.
That's the minimum, sir.
Yeah, they could have, they could have multiple hours, but it's going to be a two hour minimum.
Okay. Well, we didn't hear that minimum. All we heard was two hours.
Could we make it two eight minimum if you want?
All right. And Mr. Scott said somebody's going to pay you, but you didn't trick him into that. He came up involuntary. He thought you had it.
Okay. By the way, Mr. Nash, one of the gentlemen submitted a resume for police commission.
Here, Mr. Scott, 26423, South Winfield. Two things. When discussing and talking about the park event and rental, one way of maybe getting around it, as well as holding people accountable, is that giving them a little bit of leeway, like for instance, they have up until 30 days to get a full refund of their deposit should they not want to keep the commitment of renting out the facility. That gets them to move a little faster. That gets them to move a little faster. It also allows the person to re-rent out that facility for that timeframe, should that other person, you know, fall through. As the date that they've committed to gets closer, they start losing a lot of their deposit. So up until maybe a cutoff of seven days, or 10 days, or whatever it might be, then you might say, then you've lost all of your deposit. But give them an opportunity to pull out of that, should they have to, and you also get a chance to re-rent out that facility, if need be, within the timeframe. So it's just an idea. In terms of the park usage, anytime we have a facility or someone renting it out, I hope hardly agree with you, Trustee Pop, and that is, personally, as a parent, and all my kids are not young anymore, but as a parent, I believe if you're gonna have a youth function, no alcohol should be allowed. That's just my own personal feelings about it. If you have children in the presence of an activity or function, you should never expose them to the alcohol. It's just one thing that leads to another, it's just too much for us.
I think you saw the response of the board. It was almost loaded.
Exactly. So I, I so heart, wholeheartedly agree with that. I, I was not present at the Kids' Day, but after hearing everything that has gone on as a result of that day, I was just curious, are we gonna be doing anything like that moving forward into the fall, like Harvest Day? So I'm just curious, it gives us a little bit of time to think about, whether it's pay rides, or whatever for the kids, or anything that might be going on.
You all hear volunteer stuff?
Sure, I'll volunteer.
We have, at, about a month, was it a month ago? Uh, it was a month ago, the board voted and approved, had any fall festival, villagers were in fall festivals the weekend after Labor Day. There was some discussion and all the enthusiasm before it came down off the, uh, about even possibly doing some Halloween time things and all that. Public Works is saying, give me a break. But anyhow, so there's, there's possibilities of doing a lot of things.
Such as?
We're trying to face ourselves right now. And admittedly, the businesses, Mr. Scott as well, the businesses are very interested in participating, especially when it helps their visibility, which is what we're trying to do. We're trying to have good events and have good visibility for the businesses, it's a win-win. We also wanna make sure that we're not overwhelming our volunteers, our sponsors.
Our workers.
Our workers. Mr. Pop, God bless him, man, you were in that kitchen all day.
Yeah, you best be against them all the time.
After I went down the slip and slide, I had to slide you a little bit, that's all.
You wanna stay higher.
Anyhow, so, yes, we are contemplating many things. Maybe even a winter fest of some sort at some point, I think. Right now, let's just get through, at this point, we wanna get through.
They're just going crazy.
We're gonna get through September at this point, okay, so.
Okay. Well, that was just a thought, just an idea, just curious, too. But last but not least, in terms of this time of the year, we've been getting a lot of rain, which brings out the bugs and the mosquitoes. How often do we spray for the mosquito, as well as?
I can, I can say that after I...
Yes.
We have larva cited already, all the catch basins, the storm catch basins, there was 678 hack basins. That stops the larva from actually forming into an adult, that's already taken. We spray during, twice a week. We will be spraying tomorrow and Friday this week, due to the weather and how the forecast lay out. We have certain criteria that you have to meet, tomorrow, Friday being the best day for that, so we will be doing that. The CDC, the Center for Disease Control this year, has implemented a back-to-back spraying in an effort to raise the percentage of bugs that can kill the adult population, to keep them from being eggs, and the cycle starting over again. We have sprayed already this, this year, four times on a double cycle, and it, it's kept them at bay for the most part with the larva sighting. I brought up at a recent board level meeting, having awareness with residents on clean gutters, taking care of their properties around the area, to get rid of wastewater and open buckets. And there is literature, as you leave out, on how to do more things around your community to help reduce the population. It's all starting at the larva stage, so that they don't grow into adults and become nuisance mosquitoes. We are registered with the Illinois Department of Public Health as a testing site for the West Nile, and as soon as I have a positive, I will notify the Kennedy Air and Administration that we have been cited for West Nile, just as a higher effort to put on the bug spray, keep that off for the seniors and for the infants.
Okay, so when you, when you do your spraying, do you do it, you do all the Naples, all the...
The Moni Village one, that's correct.
The Moni Village?
Village ones, yes, our village ones, we do.
So you don't go out into, say, all?
Monit Farm.
Yeah.
We do have those worms. That's the Moni Village one, that's.
Okay.
May I, may I ask a question, David? You can answer this, too, I'll let you answer if you wish. We actually have, I don't know if it's one trained personnel or more, that takes samples to the, where do they take it, to the county or somewhere?
Actually, I nail them in. We have a freezer in Public Works, it's a, it's a, basically a lab that we have inside of there. We have two traps that are provided by the Illinois Department of Public Health, where we trap mosquitoes, we bring them from two different sources, in town and out of town, just to track. And we lab them, we send them in a test tube over to Will County Department of Public Health.
And even notes to determine what mixture you use to go after the mosquitoes. There's different mixtures depending on what the findings give you, so this is what our trained personnel do. It's pretty, pretty extensive.
John?
God, Mr. Scott. No, no, oh, okay.
Well, then it's trying to show up. DJ, if somebody finds a dead bird, is there something that they're supposed to do with it?
Contact Will County Department of Public Health, there is the, on our literature, and also on our website, currently.
Just certain kinds of birds, though, right?
Certain kinds, correct, certain kinds. They were attacked, riverbirds, crows, blue jays, such of that nature. If you find a robin, it hasn't been proven yet, but that bird is, is being attacked, or infected with the West Nile virus.
Good, thank you.
Reese Crandor, 25736 Cooper Street, I saw that little time I stood up.
So, 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 Reese Crandor, so.
I have good and bad. I'll start with the good. Kids' Day, phenomenal, I was glad I was in town for it, my kids had a blast. Even my oldest, who didn't wanna come, ended up coming back, and had a good time. Basketball, I'm glad that's being brought back up again for something for the kids to do, or possibly skate park looking is something for those middle-aged kids that they have nothing else to do but cause trouble. If they had something to do, we can keep them out of there.
You heard about middle-aged kids?
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, that in-between age.
I feel like I'm a middle-aged kid.
You know, that in-between age, you know, they're not old enough to be driving and going places, and they're too young, you know. Trash, I, I, the new company's been wonderful. I went out and asked the garbage man how I got a new, a second bin, he told me. I asked about the stickers, he handed me one, he's handing them out to everyone on my block in my neighborhood. So the new company, they've been wonderful.
That's enough, thanks, Denise. It's all positive.
No, it's not. I'm not done. I got three minutes, I'm, I'm going.
Right.
Thank you for, first off, the market study, I think it's definitely time, you know, it's not something that, unfortunately, if you wanna bring things in, we do have to spend a little bit, not thrilled about spending, but we do need a market study. Okay, so for the bad, IMRF. I'm a little bit disappointed in this, that, you know, that this very resolution passed, just for the simple fact that village residents, as, if I'm correct, 13.9, 13.96% is what the village has to contribute? That, that's not saying what yourself or the clerk can say, is if you guys decide to be in it, but, I mean, here, in the past, you know, we, we've had our trustees, they have their, you know, small amount of money, and believe me, it's small. The mayor, again, it's a small amount of money. Past mayors, I know for the last two, well, I take that back, there's been a few mayors that have not chosen to take that money. It's your prerogative, I'm not saying you should or you shouldn't, but then for the village residents to have to put an additional 13.9% in, I, I'm disappointed with that. I, I don't think it's fair. You signed up, you got elected to be a clerk, you have to learn the job, it's, it's your responsibility to learn it.
I'm sure.
I, I'm just, it, it was out there for the two positions, so I'm just stating that. And then my last issue is, I know we're short staffed in the office, I was just wondering when the code enforcer was going to be going back out. I, I've been walking quite a bit, and all over the village, and it, it's really looking kinda trashy, with more than just trash. And there's several, I counted today on my walk, over 50 violations that I know of. That's between garbage cans, between fences being down, between pools being up, and no fences around them.
You know, Elsalist?
No, she needs to go out and do her job.
I didn't say that, but I'm just saying it's...
She needs to go out and do her job.
Okay.
And, and because it, it's not just my subdivision, it, it's several subdivisions that I've been walking in, and, and it needs to be done. You know, because if we want state, if we want the community to come together like it did for Kids' Day, 'cause it was a phenomenal day, we need to keep improving and keeping things looking good. And that's what she was hired for, and that's what she needs to do. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Good. Smart.
25532 Belinda, the only question I have, you know the trees they took down with the ashtray? Are they gonna replace those, or is there anything?
There is something in the works, actually. I'm working on right now, because the, the village did not have even an active tree ordinance about, you know, describing the allowable trees, or not allowable trees, and the parkways, and our responsibility to it. So we are drafting ordinance now that should be available by the next board meeting for the trustees to look at and pass, and then we're hoping to adopt a resolution, a best practices manual for the village to follow in putting that. And we have an arborist working with us now, and he's recommended with the trees that have been cut down for a replacement program to start in the fall planting season.
I was gonna dig and plant my own, but I couldn't get two of these stumps.
Well, you know what, and...
Well, you probably won't be able to put it right where it was, that's, DJ, if you could help them understand.
I know, I dug for three hours, and I couldn't get, there was so many roots and all this stuff. I went out and bought a tree, I was gonna plant it.
Well, and then, too, please, you know, thank you for doing that, so, don't put it in the parkway if it's not on the approved list, because that's, that's the one thing that, you know, that between DJ and the arborist, that they wanna be sure that it's a correct tree to put in a very narrow space, to make sure that it's on that list, and to make sure that it does well. And the arborist does, you know, and DJ, well, correct me if I'm wrong, as long as the stump is out correctly, you are able to plant it, but it needs to be stumped correctly.
I know, I started digging, and all of a sudden, there's a stump.
Then it, at least 10 feet away from where it is.
Sir, what was your address again, sir?
25532 Belinda, Court of Superior.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Hi, I'll introduce myself. My name is Norrie Blormet, and the new director at the Puyton Public Library District, 515 North First Street in Puyton. I just wanna say hi, and tell you, I'm a new kid in town, so if you have any questions, you can reach me at the library. Thank you.
Trustee, what are you working for here?
If I can answer, no, no, not long, but okay.
We would love to work with you, and, and your board, of course, in getting a representative of space for the library here in town.
I can understand that. I'm from Manhattan, and Eldwood, and Manhattan had the same issues going on, because the libraries in Manhattan and Eldwood, like, something there, but, you know, if it's a board thing, I'll try to work with them.
Just keep in mind, I believe there was money sent into an account based on a building that was provided to the library, and when it was sold, building was given by the village to the library, when it was sold, the money was supposed to have been set aside on, for the purpose of eventually securing a part, a property here, or equipping a property for a local presence for the library here. Just so you know.
I'm sure that they did, they did mention that to me, too.
Hopefully, it's for some interest.
Thank you, thanks for meeting us all.
Thank you very much.
I'd empty it.
All right. With nothing else in that regard, any would like to go to executive session, for items pertaining to collective bargaining, litigation, or personnel, like a motion?
Yes.
Warren Braser? Go, go, please.
Gonzalez? Or?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
We're safe, yes.
Yes, correct.